We will call to order the regularly scheduled school board meeting for December 11th. First item of business is the approval of the school minutes for November 13th. What's the motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion on that? None, or was it saying I? I opposed extensions. And that motion carries. Then, next up is correspondence. Looks like we have the the North Country Education Services move letter. I did not receive anything, so it's just that in the activity schedule. Next up is Deb, isn't this a miss or?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go through, Ashmead and I were gonna go through the education, education funding in New Hampshire with guys. I also sent out, I don't know if you got the email, today, presentation with the Hampshire School Boards Association, which is pretty much walking through this spreadsheet.
I got the email. I got the email, I didn't have a chance to look.
Okay, so it is, you know, you can't sleep one night and
reading for work.
So what you have in front of you is a big spreadsheet from the state for every town in the state and how education is funded and what's impacted the taxpayers. What I passed out now is just Lincoln, a snapshot, just with Lincoln and Woodstock. Get all the towns. Plus, just the write-up of how this whole formula works. So, I mean, this has been around since the 1990s, I think, but there's been, it's been in and out of the courts, there's been changes to the formula in the years. But basically, yeah, it's a big spreadsheet. And this, the state had determined the cost of an adequate education. There's multiple factors in there. So they start with ADM, which is average daily membership. So basically your enrollments. And again, this is done by town. So you have your enrollment or your ADM for the year, and it's usually the prior year. And this is like for the next fiscal year's adequacy. And they take that ADM times this base adequacy aid. For this year, it's $4,265.64. And what they're saying is that's the base amount for an adequate education in New Hampshire, which is really, really low. When you look at the cost per pupil in New Hampshire, it's, you know, three, four times the average for the state. So there's always discussion about that. They have increased that base a little bit, you know, every year, but not to what the costs really are for an adequate education. And there's always debate on what constitutes an adequate education, what pieces of, like, the budgets should be what they call an adequate education. But nonetheless, that's what that is. And then they also give extra adequacy money for free and reduced. So they look at your free and reduced population. And they give, like, what they differentiated aid on that to, for however many free and reduced students you have in your towns, they give you a little bit more access. And then they give a little bit more for special education students. Because, you know, so again, whatever those counts are, they give you a little bit more money for special education aid. And then also ELL or English Language Learners. They give you a little bit more money for that. So those are all extra costs because it is a little bit more cost for different groups of students. So they're recognizing that. So there's also home education aid, but I guess we didn't get any on that. So you take all those pieces, you add it up, and this is what the state has said is total calculated cost of an adequate education for the students in Lincoln and for the students in Woodstock. Then there's this thing called the statewide education property tax or SWEAT. So this is basically what they're saying each town needs to raise for education purposes. So they take this rate times the town's valuations in each town, and they get a figure. So that is your, the SWEAT amount. So in, again, in Lincoln, that SWEAT amount, they take that $1.12 times whatever Lincoln's valuation is, and they get $2,256,000. And then Woodstock at $668,000. It's very heavily weighted, you'll see, towards, you know, towns that have higher property valuations. So they take, you're swept, and the cost of an adequate education, if you flip over the page, yeah, you can see the equalized valuations over there. So they, they take all of the oh, that's extraordinary grant, okay. So extraordinary grant is another piece that neither Lincoln or Woodstock get, but it's on that description. The extraordinary needs grant is an additional grant for municipalities based on the equalized property valuation over the number of free and reduced collegeable students. The municipality's equalized valuation, it's a number of things, and this valuation is divided by the number of free and reduced collegeable students, and it determines if you get an extraordinary need grant. Now, neither Lincoln or Woodstock qualifies for an extraordinary need. So then it comes to, okay, what is a preliminary grant that the towns might get? So they look at the cost of an adequate education. So for like Woodstock's, the cost of an adequate education is $691,000. How much can Woodstock raise for the statewide education property tax? $668,000. So since their cost of an adequate education is higher than what they can actually raise in that statewide education property taxes, saying for a preliminary grant, Woodstock should get at least $23,000 in adequacy from the state. For Lincoln, the cost of an adequate education is $648,000, but Lincoln has the ability to raise over $2 million in that statewide education property tax, so they would get no equity. They will not get any grant from the state because they can raise more than what they need. And when you look at towns like Lincoln, I mean, and Woodstock's pretty close to that now. It used to be the old donor towns, but now they're calling them the SWEAT towns, the the anyway, the SWEAT, the excess SWEAT towns. If you look on the big spreadsheet, you'll see, like, you know, towns like Moltenboro, and you can go through look at the column on here. But you look at towns, again, you look at some of the more property-rich towns, and they are the excess, what we're now referring to as the excess SWEAT towns. The towns that can raise more in property taxes based on their property valuation, that statewide property tax versus what the state is determining as an adequate education for that town. There's some additional grants. Because the formula has changed a lot over the years and some towns, because of the fluctuations, they have an old harmless grant, and we'll read some of the descriptions on that. So they don't, so a town doesn't lose that much money from one year to the next, and over a course, I think it's like in 2027. It's the whole harmless money, it looks like $145,000. Because again, because the formula has changed, the impact on some of the towns, they just wanted to kind of face that through a number of years. So when you add up all the different pieces, especially for like Woodstock, who gets some adequacy, who gets additional aid for the whole harmless grant, you come up with a total adequacy grant that Woodstock will get. Obviously, Lincoln's not getting anything. So Woodstock actually gets $168,000 from the state. Or is protected to get $168,000 from the state for the next fiscal year. That used to be close to $300,000. That has come down a lot. Again, that's that whole harmless, which is kind of again, there's a lot of, there's some bills out there right now for the excess.
It was still recording the video.
There's some bills out there right now for the excess SWEAT towns, because right now the excess SWEAT towns like Lincoln, Lincoln raises that money, but that money stays here. But there's some bills out there proposing that some of those excess, that the excess SWEAT towns will need to send that money to the state, and that money would go out to other towns. That's the old donor town model. So hopefully, and I know there's a lot of the excess SWEAT towns that are going to fight against that bill about taking the money that's raised in those towns and going out to other towns to fund this formula. There's, there's a lot of pieces here, there's a lot of politics here, but it's very heavily, like, Lincoln is, it's very heavily property driven.
How much is Lincoln in excess? How much would they have to give to other towns if that was the case?
I think the $2,256,000.
Minus whatever our, minus the grant, whatever our 648, probably.
Yeah, yeah, because, yeah, because again, 648, yeah. Yeah, and then there's the many excess SWEAT towns. The video is really pretty close to a lot of the same stuff, and the description of everything. And it's pretty much been the same, you should come Lincoln in two years. But I'm surprised, I saw it's, and Lincoln, Woodstock was getting 300,000 each year now, so that number is going down. Yeah, yeah. But they stayed, they changed that to that 1.12.
I think it'd probably be the whole number of divided by the whole.
Yeah. Yeah, it says, I'm giving that three actually comes from.
I guess the most significant aspect of this is potentially a significant reduction in what Woodstock is expecting to see this year.
Yeah, and that really just directly affects the tax rate.
Yeah. About the, is that a lot? I mean, you said it used to be three. Do you know what it was like last year? Has it been going down progressively, or is there a big drop?
It's been going slowly down, yeah. Yeah, I don't think it was ever, it wasn't like a million dollars at any one point since I came here.
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of, is, is Woodstock gonna have to come up with another 150 grand this year? Is that?
Yeah, I can go back and look at that. Oh, I don't, my budget binder, it's in there. So this is from the tax rates and that, yeah. And when you have any other questions?
I think, I do not.
Another piece of, another piece of the funding.
Yeah. That was a challenge. Was that it?
Yeah, that's it.
How the students and the elementary school use the glow forge to make you guys holiday ornaments. So they, they did it on the computer. They designed them, I think it's called Kittle, Pedal, something like that, a program. So they chose all the images, they had to make sure that it wasn't more orange diameter, make sure the image wasn't too close to the pot so they could burn the hole in it. They sent it from their computer to the teachers, then they sent it to the glow forge, and there's some pictures of them printing it. So it did a 3D burn on there, and then they took the, their paint markers and colored them. So they're making some ornaments tomorrow, too, as a project for some holidays here. But they wanted to send their thanks to you guys for supporting us.
The great fundraiser.
So they had a, they had a great time, and even going down to the high school to use it, and going into the high school's science class. So.
Those are awesome.
But I'd say, well, yeah, they had a great time doing that. Update on our website, that we are now starting all the migrations, so I'll be in touch with you, and that should go live July 1st. Starting to pick out some themes, and we pulled the team together, who's going to be part of that. So our first meeting, we'll send you an invite. It'll be a short meeting, just to kind of go over the process, and then um, that'll kind of start happening after the holidays, next week. So we did get the literacy grant that I spoke about, so we'll be getting $25,000 per year, over two years, so a total of $50,000 to make sure that our literacy program is using mostly research-based instructional methods, along with assessment of that, and that K to 5, they're all doing similar instructional methods. So that's pretty exciting, and we have our first meeting on that Friday. We did get the hydroponic grant, too, that's all set up. If you guys at the end of this want to go see it, set up in one of the kindergarten classrooms for now. And then we're just waiting for the state to give us all the modules and things like that of how to work through it. So the kids and the staff are very excited to get that moving along. Next week, we still have two professional development days with the middle high school on vocabulary across the curriculum, and then we'll move to syntax and making sure that vocabulary is taught in every class and, or just literacy in general. We will be working with, we still got the strategic plan, we're working with White Mountain, Wensy, to help guide us through the development of a K to 12 STEM program, which will incorporate some of these things, and making sure we have a space up here for elementary, so not always having to go down to the high school. And that meeting, I think, is in January, I think, for those in January. You can, you'll see attached this flyer, which goes over the freaking review timeline that we started to make sure that our syllabi are all in similar format. That should be updated by December 18th, so that's K to 12, similar format for English and Science. And then we'll go back and look at how we're assessing the, the assessments we're using, what we're using, and then making sure that we have the right amount of rigor in our classes and that the program of study is updated. We'll follow a very similar process with math and social studies next year. This, this came out of some of our NEAS work about having to update curriculum, and just the experience of being here for a few years and saying, where's our curriculum, and where's the updated thing? And we noticing as a team that some of it hasn't been done for almost 10 years, so it's time to do that, and the staff have been working really hard at going through their subjects. In addition to that, I heard from our strategic plan folks today and yesterday, and they're going to join this team, if that's fine, on January 8th to start the strategic plan process. They'll be in the school. We'll have groups of K to 2 meeting with them to talk about what they want for education, 3 to 5, middle school groups, high school groups of student. The staff will meet individually, those who want to. They'll also be after school with staff. The evening of the 8th with the board, and then we'll have a community, our first community forum, our forum on the 9th, and a breakfast around that, to invite the community, and all that should be going out next week. The invites, that didn't make this, because I'd already written this before I talked that to them, but that should start on that. They need about 45 minutes with you guys, so we'll look at the agenda and determine if we need to have like a non-meeting, or if it's, we have enough room just to fit it in a regular meeting. And we'll let you know on that. And then the last part is just updates on some events coming up. I think the big one that are past, say, December 10th, it could be rescheduled training, but yeah, so I think that's it. Any questions?
On the literacy grant, is there stuff that you have, like, in mind for that, or is that?
Yeah, so we, we've spent about, I think, oh, close to two years now reviewing the literacy instructional process at the elementary school. One of the things that we noticed that there's a lot of inconsistency, so we're most likely going to be for a phonics piece. We use Fort Gillingham, but to be able to add more structure, it's called U5, it's at the University of Florida, all around decoding and doing that piece. We need to determine our other part of literacy, which really is, are we comprehending? That's the main goal of literacy. So we use Whit and Wisdom, third through fifth, but we don't have that type program, K to 2. So we're gonna have to determine, are we going to continue, are we gonna purchase Whit and Wisdom K to 2 and do instruction or that? Or are we even meeting our mark where we want to with the Whit and Wisdom program? It's, Whit and Wisdom's one of the better programs out there, so I anticipate we'll be using Whit and Wisdom K to 2, but we have to look at that to see if that does meet with our youngest learners. And we don't, one of the things we don't want is to do two different programs because of the instructional approach. Some of the questions that are happening in third grade, when doing some instruction, they have to go back and reteach because some of the the common language they would use in that program, they, that program assumes it's being taught K to 2, so then they have to go back and teach. So we'll be using U5, the teachers have agreed to that, they've agreed to part of the program, we have to use something called letters, which is a framework on literacy instruction, and we all have to be trained in that. We have a few teachers, it's a two-year training program. I went through the training program for administrators, and a couple other people have too, and then a few teachers have gone through it. And have found it very valuable, but that was the commitment we made. So all the teachers, K through 5, will be certified in the framework for teaching, how do we teach the the science of reading, and then we will also be looking at our assessment, and so there's something called Acadians to make sure that when kids are reading, not only are they comprehending, but are they reading in a way that's fluent? So they'll really look at that fluency piece and to see what areas we need to tackle of that. So it's about a two-year process for us to go through this. It'll, it'll, this grant will allow us to purchase materials to help the teachers when they're outside of class time to be able to take this online course, that they need to take letters. And then a couple of people to help oversee the grant.
Those are a lot of moving parts.
It's a lot of the big part.
Any other questions? All right. I think that's just about it.
Thank you. Um, the first part on November 12th, Officer Scrappert set up a parent presentation on internet crimes against children. So we presented it to the parents on, during an evening presentation. Her guest presenters were Lieutenant Holmes and Lieutenant James, who are currently working with the Lincoln Police Department, formerly from the graphing county sheriff's. Then a week later, they returned, both individuals returned to present to our high school students. You know, it's basically just to make awareness of the crimes that do go on, on the internet, and how easy it is to, you know, get yourself lost in that world. So the presentation was well, and trying to notify the students what to look for and how to act when they're online. It went over so well that I know that Officer Scrappert, our SRO, with these two gentlemen are thinking about talking to us whether 6 through 8 could benefit from that, too.
Probably. I heard some really good things about that.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Yeah, and it would probably set up the same way that we would have a parent night for 6 through 8 graders, and then the next week, or whenever they had time to come back and present it to the students. They presented it right in here, the last, to the high school students. It went over pretty well. Thank you for that feedback.
I'd like to go to the next one. I couldn't go to that one.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, definitely the sixth graders are in that. Yeah, getting into the, right, social media more, and, you know, even the online gaming.
Right, because they're getting new to it, getting a little bit older, and yeah.
And they're getting probably less supervision when it comes to that.
We noticed that we needed some other types of transportation, so the town, we have the use of the town vans, Lincoln. Primex came on two different occasions and held the training so staff could get trained on how to, you know, use the vans. They're a lot different than your family automobile, so we can transport students. I know we're going to utilize those vans when we do our winter program. Because with, with the busing situation, it's hard to have two buses at the end of the day, and we always have one bus, pick up, drop off, go back. And so, you know, required extra time, so now what we'll do is because of the numbers, we're able to use one bus and then use one of the vans, so everyone can come back at the same time.
Nice.
Yeah, we are excited about that, and we appreciate that. You know, that we were able to use that from, and have the town provide that service for us, so that was great. The week of the 18th through the 22nd, we had our American Education Week, it went well. We had a food drive, was successful, but it could have been better, I think, on our part. So we, we have creatively discussed other ways of encouraging students to bring in food and more food, so we can donate it to our local food pantry. Scholastic Book Fair was during the week of the 11th of November, the middle, the, excuse me, the Scholastic Book Fair raised over $4,800, and some of that money goes back to Scholastic, and then the rest is split between the PTA for their scholarship, and the library uses it for books and supplies. So, yeah, they were very happy about that. Matt Manning took some students to NHTI about trades, and for students who are interested in trades to learn about the need and opportunities that are available in the trades, and try to encourage, you know, our students to get involved in that. And try to encourage, you know, our students to, to get involved in that. And the same day, Jennifer, uh, Witcher took eighteen students to White Mountain Community College to explore career paths. Each student was able to choose three career paths to explore and then they, they were able to sit in on some classes, right? And talk to some of the teachers, the professors there and, and get an idea of what kind of classes they would need. How much money would this, you know, cost to be part of any of that, um, you know, uh, learning opportunities? Um, both were excited and, uh, kids had a good time. Um, staff wellness kickball, I think kickball's been going on for like fifteen years, I thought, something like that. Somebody said it's been going on for a long time, sometimes they get a great turnout and other times not, but they all seem to have fun. Uh, fall concert, um, on, uh, that was during, um, American Education Week. So, uh, Tom Untressi and Kristen Bushway had a high school band and chorus concert. Uh, I believe it was a Wednesday, is it, it was a Wednesday, I put that, yeah, eleven nineteen, which was a Wednesday. Um, had a good turnout, all went well. Uh, Matt Manning ran a virtual financial aid one-on-one presentation to help our seniors and others, maybe even junior parents. To get an idea of what this, um, whole process is. Yalta, um, held a pajama, pajama movie night for grades five, twelve. Um, and then our rotary speech competition. Um, started on that day before we left for Thanksgiving break and we had grades nine through twelve give speeches. To Rotarians as judges, middle school, high, middle high school staff and students were there. And as you can see, some of our students, I am Maisy and Maha Dalton, uh, were all selected to move on. So those are nine through twelve, um, grades. And on November twenty-sixth, um, they, um, ended up going to, um. I think the station, was it, no, it wasn't. The Rotary meeting, yeah, and they presented there, uh, on the twenty-sixth, early in the morning. And then Dalton, uh, Lilick, he is our, uh, winner, he received two hundred dollars. Um, for his, um, for his winnings and, um, Maisy Anderson was the first alternate. Meaning that if Dalton is unable to do it, for whatever reason, Maisy will take his place. Um, the last I heard, it was in January, they didn't have a specific date yet and it will be at the Common Man in Plymouth. At the next round. Uh, Officer Scrappert has been conducting our hazard drills, those are things that we are required to do. So we had our first one on, on the fourth and, uh, we'll, we will have one on Friday. We're supposed to have two this month, um, and so we will get those then, and Officer Scrappert is running that. And then we do have, um, members of the Lincoln Police Department come in and, and assist in that, um, drill. And then today was supposed to be our, our LWEA crap workshop, but we do, due to the weather, we were a little nervous. So we canceled all afternoon activities and this workshop will now, um. Us begin next Tuesday, we schedule it postponed to next Tuesday. I think that's it for me.
How's it going on? Yeah. Any questions? Alright, thank you, um. Next up, we have committee reports, let's see, we have the minutes of the most recent. Facilities Committee, I think we talked about all the stuff last, at the last meeting. Um, and you, you had, you meet today or? Uh, and then policy. Okay, we do have, um, on the agenda, uh, up for approval. Uh, a bunch of. Uh, policy changes, these were. Maybe you can speak to all, all of that, I'm not understanding, the majority of these relate to such story changes. That we have, you know, little to no, um, control over, whether or not we can, we're, we adopt them or not.
I was at the last policy.
Okay.
Uh, these are the ones that you guys brought through in August and we said we'd go back through the committee, so they're all around kind of line changes.
Yeah, and it, right, so, yeah, so this was the, the ones where we sort of, and approve them. Kind of skipping the normal process because of the timelines and the requirements that they'd be in place before the school's year started. And then we were still going back through to make sure that everything's. Uh, that, and that's what we're stuck to all of them, I think, maybe.
High school graduation.
High school graduation requirements and then the staff one, sports staff one, I think that was modifying, um, the holiday names. Because of, you know.
Yeah.
Legislative priorities.
Yeah.
So. So I don't, if anyone has any, does anyone have any, uh. Comments on any of those at this point? Uh, I think that we, the way that we've been doing this is, I'll accept a motion to prove the. Let's see, AC, ACA, ACAC, ACE, ACN, ACR two, GBAM, GCI, GBD dash R, IKF. IHBCA, JLDBB. Uh, or to approve those as updated. Make motion? Thank Casey, any further discussion on that? Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close, extensions and that motion carries, and then the next one is, accept a motion to withdraw IKF dash R of the graduation requirements. Thank Casey.
Second.
Thank Kevin, are all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close, extensions and that motion carries. Um, next up is business requiring board action, nominations, recommendations, resignations.
Yeah, we had one resignation, it was a part-time position, like house. She's refined, it was, that's payable. Sharon's working and supporting that piece for us.
Are we going to post that?
Kind of re-shuffle things around right now.
Um, is that not, if that's not something that we need to accept the resignation, right? Um, new business, basketball games.
I think that was about, I, I think we need to go back and look at through policy committee and look at our policy around, uh, charges. So I don't, I think that was put on there early before we had that.
It should come to a regular.
Yeah, I think we got it on there too quickly and we have to bring it through policy, but policy was canceled.
Yeah, and I, I think the issue is, um, I mean, we've, we've charged for basketball game in the past, so I don't think it's. Probably against any policy, but I don't, I, it was a question of whether or not the board thought it was a good idea to do. Understanding that, you know, the money is sort of earmarked for booster club stuff. But in terms of finding creative ways to continue to encourage community participation while being able to raise some funds. That's something that I think what we're targeting.
It raises about fifteen hundred a year, um, and it goes back to the booster and then the booster supplies, you know, warm-up shirts and things like that. Uh, for the school and other equipment, um, and. Prior to COVID, there was payment for the entry fees and most schools do it. Um, there was some will, um, that maybe we shouldn't be charging again, um, but wanted to bring it before you guys. See if that's what you guys wanted to do, or we were gonna look at some policies to say, can we charge, um, the away team? When they come in and come up with some other, uh, creative way around that.
Well, you said your food drive was not the greatest this year, maybe I think we can go to.
Yeah.
Yeah, go to the games.
Yeah.
That is your admission fee?
Yeah.
No, no, it's a good idea, because sometimes they, you know, organizations do that.
Except that the people coming from afar, you know, right.
Or donation jar or something like that.
Yeah, I think in terms of like. We don't, we don't want people to feel like they can't come to the games because of an entry fee, obviously. It's probably, probably not looking at, at a lot of people that are in that situation, but it may be, you know, it may have the effect of discouraging. Re participation, which is sort of the opposite of what we're trying to do here.
I thought Joe's point last time was really, well said, is, uh, we don't charge for soccer games, country races. Or any other sporting event, basketball, if you, ba- baseball, we don't, but that doesn't, doesn't make sense.
Yeah. That's probably, I mean, that's probably largely the factor, if that's the one that we can control and we can actually, you know, right, right. So I don't know, I think that warrants further thought about, that we can continue to help support the booster club, because they do a lot of good work. Um, while, you know, maybe there's some other opportunities or. But I, I don't know, it seemed like at least the consensus among the northern businesses that we would prefer not have, the, the people be charged.
Have a conversation with Matt and Booster Club and think of other ways we can try to figure out how to support.
Alright, next thing up is, uh, in continuing business, the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six budget, do we need anything, have we talked about anything about that?
Yeah, we have another work session next week, um, and we'll, you know, we discuss a few changes. But I mean, we haven't got through the whole process, but if there's any other questions that you guys have at this point.
I don't, I didn't, we won't say those for the workshop. Did any pressing issues, pressing questions and budget related? I'm seeing students and I don't see any teachers today, I think staff or community. So with that, we should go to Jared, thank you Kevin, second, if you can say, all in favor? Aye, that is unanimous, very good, thank you.